I'm here tonight to public comment regarding the travel basketball teams for fourth through eighth grade. Travel coaches were informed that all travel home games this year are going to be held at Turkey Hill Elementary School due to accommodations being made to varsity basketball for practices and for track practices on Sundays. And we're just curious how this is fair to the coaches and children playing for Lunenburg, for the town of Lunenburg. Turkey Hill is quite honestly, an embarrassment for ourselves as a town. This gym at Turkey Hill is not even a regulated gym. It is so short that kids feel that a half court shot is actually a good possibility. The backboards are from the 1960's and players can either choose to sit on the floor in the corner or on the bleachers with the rest of the crowd. Parents of Lunenburg players are not only paying taxes for the new beautiful $72 million high school that has a beautiful gym, but are now also bearing the 25% increase of fees that replaced this year on the league. Since Turkey Hill may actually qualify as the worst gym in the league, there has been talk among travel coaches to suggest all of our games be away. This is extremely unfortunate. Lunenburg would lose out on a lot of admission money. These kids are the future of varsity sports. They should be treated with the same consideration as the varsity players. There are 11 to 13 games played in the season. It would be nice to maybe even consider giving them six or seven games in the high school gym. However, if the league decides to play all away games so as to not have the embarrassment of playing at Turkey Hill, I would hope that the fee we are charged to practice and play would be reduced. I'm not exactly sure where to go from here. This seemed to be the right first step invoicing the league's disappointment, but I want to thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair's Report. I just wanted to mention some feedback we had on Facebook several weeks ago in regards to our policy discussion that we will be talking about politics in the classroom. And we had some feedback on some of the Facebook public pages about what it would be about, what we were talking about with the policy and public comments in the classroom making students uncomfortable. I just wanted to talk to, to address the issue of publicly commenting on Facebook. If you do have concerns about what we talk about on school committee, during school committee meetings, all of our email addresses are on the Lunenburg Schools page. You can reach out to any of us and ask us questions directly. If you have questions regarding the schools, you can reach out to the administration and ask them directly. To publicly comment on Facebook page doesn't really get you the answers that you desire or the information that you need. So I would appreciate it if you do have questions or concerns, just send myself or superintendent or any one of us five members your questions and we will gladly respond. So, we have warrants on the table to approve, they're down there? Okay. And minutes for October 4th and 18th. Did you all take a look at the minutes?
And the revised minutes.
And the revised minutes?
Revised, yes.
Are they all okay now?
I think so.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve our regular session October 4th and 18th minutes with revision.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And so superintendent's report?
Hello, everyone. Thank you. It's such a wonderful meeting when we have this meeting in November, when we take the opportunity to recognize the superintendent's award recipient for the year. And it was a great pleasure that I introduce Abigail L. Dewire as the recipient of the 2017 Superintendent's Award. Abigail, do you want to join me up here while I talk about the wonderful accomplishments that you've had at Lunenburg High School? I'm so delighted to have you and your family here and we'll have you introduce your family in a second. But first, I want to make everyone aware that you're the daughter of Todd and Jacqueline Dewire who are here with us tonight along with your sister. And we, during your four years here at Lunenburg High School, you have enrolled in a very rigorous course of studies, taking honors and advanced placement courses since your freshman year and even before that as an eighth grader. That's right, in mathematics. So you're a top academic performer and a standout in your overall achievement. You've also been active in the arts as a vocalist as well as a thespian. Last spring, I had the opportunity to present to Abigail the Smith College Book Award. And that award goes to an outstanding junior who exemplifies academic achievement, leadership, and concern for her fellow classmates. And isn't that what we want for all of our students to be such wonderful contributing members of our society and exemplify the citizenship that makes society work for us? While attending LHS, you've received numerous Academic Excellence Awards, including awards in calculus, anatomy, psychology, Spanish, and English. You're an active member of the National Honor Society. And in addition to all of those rigorous courses, which I know is a lot of homework and a lot of work for you, you're a member of the LHS Student Council. You've been in the chorus. You're a member of PULSE, which is the high school acapella group. And you've been a member of the cast in our theater as well as musical theater productions throughout your high school career. And in fact, you received the Katie Krieger Memorial Award for Best Actress when you were sophomore. Quite an accomplishment. You're currently Vice President of the LHS course. So you serve as a volunteer in the schools and in the community. You've assisted with Unified Track Program. You've participated in Make-A-Wish Reveal Program. You've worked too, in addition to all of this, she works part-time at Kimbo Farms. And after graduation, Abigail hopes to attend a four-year university in Boston to study sociology and mathematics and then attend law school. It's such a great privilege for me to be able to recognize you and present you this award, which is one that across our Commonwealth, every superintendent presents to scholars either at least one and depending upon the size of the school and the district, maybe some more. But I wanted to highlight for folks also the quote that you chose from Susie Casson, who's an American writer and poet and philosopher. And the quote that Abigail selected was "Doubt kills more dreams than failure ever will." And I think that really exemplifies the way that you've approached your work and your friendships and just what you've done while you've been at Lunenburg High. So I'm honored to recognize you. You're a very accomplished young woman and your future is very bright. So congratulations to you, Abigail.
Well, I'm just here with both my parents, my mom and my dad and my little sister. And just wanted to kind of say thank you to Lunenburg because I entered the school district pretty late. I was an eighth grader and was very, very timid. By the end of eighth grade, I had no friends. So it just kind of shows that the high school is such a welcoming and wonderful community that I was able to accomplish this with all the kids who have been here since kindergarten together. And I felt completely welcomed and just a very positive environment. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Abigail. And congratulations to all of you. I did want to do one other acknowledgement for superintendent's report. On Saturday, I was able to travel to Reading and I was able to watch the Division One bands. I wasn't able to stay for the full band competition and I wish I would have been able to because it's quite remarkable what these young people are doing. In Division One, Denham, Lunenburg, Fitchburg, Swansea, Belrica, and Dudley were part of that particular competition. The competitions are leveled based upon the number of participants in the band and the color guard as opposed to the size of the school because as I read through that list, you know that Lunenburg is one of the smaller schools that I listed there. But our students in the last two competitions have taken home a second and a third place, which is quite remarkable because, you know, they've been working so very diligently over the years and particularly this year, they've added another practice to their schedule. They're out there on Saturdays as well as late Thursday nights. And even their performance rating between the two performances gained five points. Mrs. Wardwell, who's the director, let me know about that. So I just wanted to share the program from that if you'd like to look through it and just tell how very proud we are of the band and all that they've accomplished. And this is the first year our band has actually placed in these competitions. So I wanted to acknowledge that and also wanted to talk about how excited we are that they'll be performing prior to the special town meeting here in a couple of weeks around. They'll do two performances. If it's, if weather permits, they'll be outside greeting people as they come in with that performance. And they'll do one at 6:30 and another one. The performance is only about seven minutes long. They won't be going through the formations, but the music will be there. But on the screens inside, it's our intent to have the full performance where they're going through their formations, to have that playing inside for people to be able to enjoy. So come out to town meeting definitely and come out a little early for town meeting so you can hear this wonderful band perform.
What is the day of town meeting?
That is.
November what?
November 28th.
28.
28.
7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM. But 6:30 to hear the band.
6:30 to hear the band.
Or 6:45, you could hear the band too.
Come early, get your seat.
You need to get checked in. They'll be performing in the gym. The town meeting is in the auditorium, but it's a short walk across the corridor there to get from one to the other. But there is that check-in procedure and everything. So do come out and, you know, show your appreciation and enjoy this wonderful talent that we have here in our band members. So that's my superintendent's report.
Good things happening.
Yes.
Okay, student rep is not here today, but I will fill you in on all the athletics going on. The field hockey just advanced to play Oakmont on Friday. Football is playing districts on Friday and soccer is playing on Friday. I don't know if any of them are home or, I know that field hockey-
Soccer just got there, just got it today.
So, field hockey is away at Oakmont. I'm not sure what football is, but I know they're all playing Friday.
Yeah, I thought they were away, but let's check our website. It'll be up on the website and everybody will know. Or call the office, call the high school, call the superintendent's office. We'll be able to answer that. It's evolving, they're just getting scheduled.
I know, they're all just getting placements, so. Old business, the second reading of the policy, the school calendar policy?
Yes, I just wanted to do a quick overview for every, the listeners. Basically, we've worked with various groups in the school community over the years and most recently, a nice working meeting, a workshop meeting with representatives of our Teachers Association. And we're inserting some guidelines that have been developed over the time for all of those groups. Guidelines that include a statement of what's required by regulation, meaning 180 days of school. And we also schedule five snow days within a regular calendar. And any snow days that you take must be made up by June 30th. So that's straight out of the regulations and so that's articulated. If those regulations should change at any point in time, it would be important to change this particular policy. But they've, that's been a pretty longstanding kind of state regulation. We also added that a school week needs to consist of a minimum of two and a half instructional days. That's our goal when we're putting together a calendar. And we want to maintain as many five-day weeks as possible to maximize the continuity of instruction. And we're also, some other details that are being added is that schools shall start the week before Labor Day and be comprised of a minimum of a three-day week for students, usually Thursday, or Tuesday through Thursday. And then we have a list of the days where there'll be no school and those are the state and national holidays that are articulated. Our Thanksgiving break will be a half-day on Wednesday and Thanksgiving Day as well as the Friday following Thanksgiving Day. So February break shall be the week of President's Day. April vacation will be the week of Patriots' Day. And winter vacation shall encompass December 24th through January 1st. And the school committee may choose to take the 23rd of December as a no-school day if the winter break results in a singular day school week. So professional development shall be scheduled in accordance with our agreements with the Teachers Association. And those are basically the changes that we've articulated into this policy. This is the second reading of that policy. There'll be three readings before any action is taken to approve either the policy in this revised form or some different revised form. And in the superintendent's update yesterday, I let people know that we will receive public comment and I will bring that back to the school committee and that we receive until, through the next meeting, which is November 16th. But we need that by noon in order to make sure that we can get that organized and any of that feedback provided to the school committee members. So you can take that into consideration as you continue the process of revising this policy. So that's an overview of what the revisions are to that particular school policy. It's in the Section 5000, School Calendar, and the number of the policy is 5105.04. And that's at our website as well. The revised policy is posted at our website for, so you can access it there for public comment. Or once again, contact the superintendent's office and we'll make sure that we send a hard copy off to, out to anybody that might need it in that form.
Okay, so you basically read it.
Well, I highlighted all the changes.
So do we need to waive the reading?
You have that right to waive the reading.
So we're gonna waive the reading of the entire policy. Can I take a motion to waive the reading?
I make a motion that we waive the second reading of policy 5105.04 of the school calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So new business, we have a donation?
We do. Once again this year, the Connor B. Lorenz Memorial Fund has been extremely generous in supporting scholarships for students that are attending trips within the Lunenburg Public School. Our tradition around this donation has been to split it between the Nature's Classroom trip and the Washington DC trip. Those are our trips that we want as many of our fifth graders, Nature's Classroom, or eighth graders, Washington DC, to be able to participate in. And so these funds, along with other gifts and donations that we receive, help support scholarships for students who may need that support in order to be able to participate. So I recommend to the committee that we acknowledge this with gratitude and accept it and distribute it in that fashion in terms of splitting it between the gift funds at Turkey Hill Elementary School and Lunenburg Middle School to be used for scholarships for those trips.
Ooh, I'll take a motion for all of that.
I move to accept the donation of $2,500 from the Connor B. Lorenz Memorial Fund with gratitude and allocated as the superintendent suggests.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second, public comment.
A quick announcement, the Class of 2019 is holding a, well, I have a 2019 student, so I wanted to get the word out for their class fundraiser through the, with the, in partnership with the epilepsy foundation. So any clothes, linens, towels, shoes can be brought in between today and December 5th. There are bins at each school. They're right inside, most are right near the front office. And just put them in some sort of plastic bag, a trash bag, a grocery store bag, just so that they're not, they're easy to gather up and out. And proceeds will go to benefit the epilepsy foundation.
So it's a fundraiser for the epilepsy, not for the Class of 2019?
No, I'm sorry. The fundraiser obviously is benefits the epilepsy foundation. They partnered with them. But there is, there is profit for-
The Class of 2019.
The Class of 2019. Per pound, they get 20 cents per pound on clothing. And there are also opportunities for books and other things. There is a flyer that has gone, that went home yesterday, the superintendent's update. And they're, it's also posted around town, the senior center, over at the bank, other places locally, the library. And so you can see exactly what items, exactly what items are-
I saw it, yeah, okay. I just wondered how it was a fundraiser, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was very exciting, if I may, when this proposal, it's the first, you know, it was a nice community service project in addition to being a fundraiser for the group. And I do want to also acknowledge the town manager because I reached out to her because I said, you know, "We're anticipating getting lots of things and the students are committed to making sure that every day they, or every other day, that they're picking those up, but we needed someplace to keep them." And I asked about using some space at TCP for this month-long effort. And the town manager was very, you know, responsive and supportive of us being able to not have somebody have to take that home to their garage or distribute it around different places or try to find another place in the schools to do it because we need to keep those front offices, obviously. We can't have things building up there. And we're anticipating a great response from the community. So I've started cleaning out my closet, I know, so. But we're really appreciative of having that space at TCP to be able to support the class in terms of this effort because then they have to get it in. And it's just a nice opportunity for, all the way around, for all the participating parties, I think. So thanks for remembering to mention that, Mrs. Bertrand.
End date is December 5. December 5, so you have a month to-
Clean out my closet.
Out through stuff.
And I think books, right?
There are books, there are other items, but it's, you can have like books and magazines, but not encyclopedias or something like that. The flyer is out there, you've got to check that out. But yes, definitely.
Great, okay. Reports, Mr. Leveque?
So for the Athletic Advisory Council, we met on the 25th. We had an informal get-together shortly before the catering, the cafeteria staff did a little catering menu for the booster clubs so that they could see what is available at the school for banquets.
Yep.
And so that was part of our discussion. You know, they got to taste the food, they looked at the menu, the prices, and so that was part of our discussion in terms of consolidating the efforts and kind of keeping things even across the lines. So they looked at that. We are still working on the spreadsheet for updating, each booster club is doing fundraisers, so they're putting it in the spreadsheet so that people can understand where's the money going. Why are you asking me for money and what's it going for? So that, the big thing is that we want to be transparent in terms of the fundraising because there's been so much of it going on. So that should be done by the time we have our next meeting. There was also some discussion about the uniforms. Some of them are in better shape than others. You know, height, you know, sliding into, in the home base kind of puts a wear and tear on baseball uniforms versus running around and shooting baskets. So there's good, we're gonna look at the uniforms and ensure that we are getting consistent logoing because there's been different logos on the uniforms as well. So that's part of the topic of discussion.
Wow, interesting.
So on the fundraising, we have a small group of people that are talking about how we can make fundraising a little more equitable and not so annoying to the parents that are getting hit by multiple people. So they're looking at streamlining those and instead of doing it by sport, by season. And so maybe doing some seasonal fundraising instead of-
That way there's no overlap, right?
Right.
Okay.
There was also some discussion about what we can do in the off-season in terms of boost, spending booster club money, which we can't do. We were given some samples of new banners to put into the gym to replace the old heavy felt ones. We liked what was provided. It was a blue cloth, kind of satiny finish with white lettering and white trim. And so Mr. McCullough is going to get the pricing for that and let us know at the next meeting as well. And we did talk about student representation and what we would like to have for students. We would like to have two boys and two girls. We would like to have a mixture of seniors and juniors at this point and if possible, multi-sport or multi-season players.
Right.
What we are also going to do is invite current seniors that are playing sports to attend our next meeting and give us some input on what their experience has been in the, in the sports program at the high school in terms of signing up, fees, all that kind of stuff. So we can start getting some, some information about what can make the program better and enhance their experiences. So speaking of our next meeting, that will be on Monday, November 27th at the middle school workroom at 7:00 PM. And that's where we're at at this point. Questions?
I heard some good feedback. It's enlightening for some people.
We are new, so, and we're getting our footing and it's, we're coming together in terms of what our mission is. And I think, you know, the first meeting was, why are we here?
Right.
And the second meeting was, now we see some value in doing this. So I think by the third meeting, we'll, we'll be able to get running and actually start making some-
Right.
Some progress towards some of the, some of the issues that we've seen.
I think that it's enlightening for some of the people on the committee that had different views on different sports that they're not involved with-
Right.
And a lot of things that I heard, feedback-wise.
It's enlightening for me as well, not having any-
I just think that it's good to get people together that have one perspective and then they get clarity.
Yes. Communication.
Yes. Yeah. So, all right. Did anyone have a school council meeting?
I did.
You did.
Primary school did. Had a great school council meeting. And it was actually attended by a senior as well who was there for Community Service Learning class that they take. So, and they actually had a lot to offer. So it was really, it was nice. But just looking at, spent a lot of time talking about at the primary school, they're working on class charters. So really focusing on the social emotional, the mood meter. They've had many of their faculty go down to a university for their program, which has a huge social, social emotional focus, and just bringing that into the classroom. We really got into a long discussion around just that aspect of how, how you're feeling in the classroom. And it made me think about something I want to bring up and as far as topics for future discussion. But I think the teachers, especially kindergarten and first grade teachers, were surprised at how articulate, you know, five, six, and seven-year-olds were about the environment they wanted to learn in. So that was, they were pleasantly surprised and they're already feeling effects in their room. When things are feeling off, you know, they're, they're bringing it back to, all right, we created this together. How do you think, you know, are we there? How are we feeling? So that was the big part of the meeting, also conference scheduling and things like that and some of the, some of the challenges in doing all of that. So that was good to hear, just some feedback about that. Next meeting is November 29.
And I think at Facebook, they posted some of those charters.
They did, they did on the-
So if you're interested on our Facebook page.
Pretty amazing, really.
Yeah, I think I could see those.
The vocabulary.
Yeah. Because they come up with their own words.
So first grade teacher said, "My student looked right at me and said, 'I want to be heard.'"
There you go.
Not what she was expecting someone that young to say.
I'm sure they never feel heard. I'm sure a lot of them don't feel heard.
The importance of that, that voice.
Yep, absolutely.
And we did meet at the, at the middle school-
Oh, you did, okay.
On the 24th. And I unfortunately did not bring my notes, but I know we remember, I remember talking about the, the district plan and how the school plan is going to tie into that and looking at the handbooks as part of our plan.
Oh, for the strategic plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I don't have my notes. I don't have all the specifics of what we talked about.
That's all right.
But we did meet.
Okay.
And the team seems to be fully engaged and, and very happy about, at least so far, where the school has landed. So far this year, it's that they're, everybody's very positive about the direction at the moment.
The new MCAS results came out, right? And they went home today for the...
We did talk about those a little bit, yeah.
Did you talk about those?
About, well, and the change.
Right. And reading them.
And, and right.
Yeah. The instructions went home.
And students...
How to interpret.
Yes, and I think students were, my student came home with an idea of that. So, she expressed that she knew that they were scored differently.
It was a new test.
Yep.
New assessment.
And I think that was important for students to know, because if they, if they are in touch with what scores they've had in the past, knowing that this was not any sort of correlation one way or another of...
Correct.
Of performance necessarily. So, I think that's...
To restart.
Yes.
There was also some discussion about doing a one-to-one with Chromebooks, starting at sixth grade, potentially.
Okay.
And so, there's, there's some, so, they're gonna come up with some numbers on that.
Okay.
Well, and it may not be take-home Chromebooks. They may be at the school.
Oh, a cart, oh, talking cart then.
Well, no, they've, they've got a cart, but the cart is, if one of the teachers needs them, and for multiple days, then other teachers can't have access to them. So, they're, they're looking at potentially doing the one-to-one for increase, well, no, increasing the, the assigned Chromebooks.
I'm just wondering how that will translate to the high school, since ninth graders don't have a one-to-one.
With the high...
Well, that's part of the, the plan. Is to do six through nine on a three-year schedule, and then 10 through 12.
I'm just making sure we're covering that one grade that doesn't have them in the high school. We don't wanna forget them.
And that's kind of a preview. Obviously, the principals are, are working with the school councils as they prepare for responding to the strategic plan, as well as for setting up the discussions for the budget that is coming up. But indeed, as, with all the online, as our teachers and students embrace and use the technology more, the demands for the carts, when we did the project, having a, a one-cart per every two grade, two classrooms at the middle school seemed pretty good. But folks are finding that they can't schedule it as, as often as they'd like to. So, we are putting together, Mr. Maladrenos will be with us on the 16th to present the budget. So, you might see the first glimpse of different scenarios and how they might play out financially. Because as per our discussion with the initial one-on-one initiative, the notion is not just how to do it, but how to sustain it, which is so critical.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah. How do you afford it to begin with, and how do you sustain it? So...
Okay.
Those are things yet to be revealed and, and discussed, obviously.
I don't think the PTO met. Did they meet after?
No, their next meeting is November 13th, the middle school project room. Barnes &amp; Nobles is on the 16th.
16th.
Which is the same day as ours. The time is from four to nine.
Oh, is it four to nine? So, we could go before we...
Yes, you could go before. But if you couldn't make it, there will be an online code. They did not have that posted yet. I think that's kind of a day of. They start posting that code, and then it's good for, if it does the same as last time, good for a week after. So, if you can't make that day, then...
Right, okay.
Do the online code.
And what percentage do you get back?
10%.
Okay.
And that includes the cafe as well.
My favorite part.
Cheesecake.
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 Now, I think of cheesecake. Okay, topics for future discussions. Wendy, you said you had something?
I did. Um, the last year, I've just, I've been reflecting more on the last year in our district. We moved into, you know, we had buildings shifting, changing, new buildings, many new learning and curriculum initiatives, which we have seen over the past year. And we're putting a lot of time and effort. I, I work with the Wellness Subcommittee around focusing on student mental health, you know, in addition to their, to their, you know, academics. And I'm wondering if we don't take some time to talk with our educators, and whether it be via survey or something, to see how they're doing. They've experienced a ton of change, and they have been, had a lot of additional tasks, data, changes put onto their plates. And everything trickles down. So, what comes into our classrooms comes from them. So, I don't know. I just thought about how could we possibly discuss a way to check in, or just ensure that, you know, staff have what they need.
Right.
And they feel supported, whether it's building-wide initiatives, you know, asking principals to do something. I'd love to hear some sort of check in.
Sure.
And just back to the emotional intelligence, all of those initiatives at the primary and the elementary school have started with the teachers to provide, well, the faculty and staff, not just the teachers, but the faculty and staff, an understanding of, of what those techniques and strategies are about to manage stress and bring our best selves to the work every day. So, that was one component that we can explore some more. I'll ask our new HR director, Mr. Cassidy, to also let, provide an update of the kinds of things that are, exist, that we offer, that the school committee and general public, hopefully our staff, know about them in terms of those supports being out there. But we can do an overview and even look at a different kind of staff survey, because I know that as the mood meters have rolled out for our staff, we see what they are. We have one in our office, and we pay attention when people are in that red zone, or a zone where they're feeling distressed, or they're feeling upset. And how can we support everybody to, once again, not trying to be cliche, but taking those meta-moments and using the ruler techniques and moving ourselves to a position where we are there with our best selves to do the work to support students. Because as you said, it does trickle down. So, if I'm having one of those days where I'm not in the best emotional zone, that's gonna impact everyone around me. And so, that is really the key to the whole emotional intelligence work that's going on, that it's not just for the students. It's for families and for our adults in the schools as well.
And I, piggybacking on that, my curiosity and interest is, what can we do to support? And are there common themes in what could potentially be causing that? Because somebody can just come in, we all have a, a day. And sometimes it's related to nothing in our, in our work life. And sometimes it is. So, I, I'm thinking, listening to different faculty members speak about what they need to manage in a day outside of their students, just, you know, is big, and it's changing, and, and it definitely is growing. So, just ensuring that if we're seeing any common themes, what we can do as a district to, to support.
You bet.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to back up to school building committee.
Oh, sorry.
Skip that. There is a meeting scheduled, or, well, they're, they're working on scheduling a meeting for November 8th.
Really?
To close out.
The final meeting.
Is that a wrap-up meeting?
It should be to close out.
Wow.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
Well, for so long, there was no, there was no update.
No, nothing.
Yeah. Okay.
We've been trying to get that nailed down, going through with the MSBA and doing all the cross validations with the ProPay system, just all the numerous things that need to be done in order to get to that final meeting. But they seem to have it in their, their view now. If, if not next week, hopefully December, but we thought it was going to be October.
Yeah. And we do have dates for policy Subcommittee meetings. What are they again?
Do we?
Just so that we can tell it to the public, right?
The 9th, yeah. And we will post those.
Yes, it will be posted, Policy Subcommittee, um, the 9th at 7 o'clock in the Lunenburg Middle High School Large Conference Room, and I think the 27th of November, also in the same location at 7 o'clock. So, they are open to the public for comments, just to sit and listen to what we're talking about in our policy discussions. And if you have any comments, there will be a public comment sect time.
And, and the agendas for those will be posted, just as the agenda for this meeting, any public meeting, is posted at least 48 hours in advance. And those are posted, just like the school committee, regular meetings and, and special meetings are posted. So, people can access that online, or, or call our office, or call the clerk's office to find that. I also wanted to follow up. I know Ms. Ailes had asked about follow-up with our new positions and different things we did. And I did request of the administrators to make sure when they're bringing the current year's budget forward, that they're reporting on those kinds of things that we made changes with, or added to, added positions, lowered class size, that they report upon those in detail as they come to you with next year's budget proposal.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is that acceptable?
No, that's fantastic. I think it's good to reflect on whether it was effective or not, and what we could do moving forward, so.
And I, I felt rather than funnel those reports through me, or just have it in writing, to be able to have them present it as they presented that budget, made, seemed to make sense.
Absolutely, thank you.
That meeting on the, the 27th conflicts with the athletic advisory.
Athletic advisory.
And I've got this on the schedule with Principal Spadino.
What, the location?
The location is the same room as well.
In the conference room?
Oh, not in the conference room, sorry.
Yeah, we're in the large conference room.
We're in the office.
The project.
We're in the project group, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can stay high and then walk by.
But they will have to, to choose which meeting to take.
Yeah, if you wanna come to our policy meeting, you'll have to pick. I don't know. There could be hot topics at both. So, okay. That's good to know, though. Thank you, Jim. So, thanks for everyone to coming. Now, we're gonna go into executive session?
Um, yes.
Okay, so, we're gonna adjourn to executive session according to MGL, C, C, Section C-30A, Section 21AC, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And we're not coming back to public?
No.
Meeting. So, thank you for coming. Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.